Supervisor Valley, we see you on. You want to do a quick soundtrack?
Yes, good morning. I'm here.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Looks like Mr. Norwood is still trying to log back in, so we'll give him a moment to try to get his sound stuff straightened out.
Melanie, do you have his phone number?
I may have it in an email somewhere.
Do you want me to look it up for you?
Yeah, that, uh, I, um, actually, I'll have to grab a phone anyways. Hold on just a sec.
I'll check for you.
Do you see we have one call-in user? Do we have a call-in user who needs to be identified, or do we have someone just listening in?
Are you ready for Mr. Norwood's telephone number?
Sure. Thank you.
Melanie, I will send him an email that you're trying to reach him, and, uh, his microphone's muted.
This is Wade Norwood.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. We hear you this time. Mr. Slattery, if you would turn your microphone down on your end a little bit. It looks like we're going to have some reverb from your end.
I am, can you coach me a little bit? I've not used this platform before.
Sure. If you go into, um, actually, I'm gonna have my IT guys walk you through. Hold on just a second.
Hi, Michael. So we just need you to turn down the speakers on your computer is all.
Okay. I've got audio options down at the bottom of the screen. Shall I click that?
Uh, no, no, no. Just on your actual computer, if you could, um, turn down the volume just a little bit. Just the regular speakers out of your computer.
I'm gonna try, right? No. Is that better?
Uh, I think it is, yeah. I'm not hearing a reverb.
It's harder for me to hear. Let me try this. Does this work?
Yeah, I think, well, there is a little bit of a reverb, but we'll try to work around it.
If I turn it down lower, I can't hear you guys.
Understood. Um, and actually, what would work is if you'll just put yourself on mute when you're not speaking, then that'll solve the issue completely.
Okay, good morning. Today is December 7th, 2020. It is 9:05 a.m. Uh, this is a regular, this is a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Reading script.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson is not present, and Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, four members are present. We are ready to conduct business today. We will adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Kings County Board of Equalization. Uh, the first matter of business before us is, uh, board approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2020, regular meeting, and report from closed session. Counsel, anything you want me to report out on?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing?
No.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve minutes?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Nevs?
Yes.
Supervisor Valley?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Verboon?
Yes.
Supervisor Fagundis?
Yes.
Okay, four in favor, one absent, and, uh, it passes. Next motion, uh, next item, it will be, uh, a business that's conducted a hearing to consider the assessor's request for clarification of board's decision on application numbers, uh, 15-013 through 15-017, 15-036, and 16-012 through 16-016. With regard to today's public hearing, the board will have received the following pleading from the parties. Item one, assessor's October 8th, 2020 request for clarification. Item two, Laprino's objection of the assessor's request for clarification dated October 28th, 2020. Item three, assessor's opposition to Laprino's objection to the assessor's request for clarification dated November 20th, 2020. Laprino's reply to assessor's opposition dated November 27th, 2020. And that's it. So how do we go from, where do we go from here? I'm reading the script, and I, so we're going to adjourn to closed session? Okay, at this point, we'll adjourn and go to closed session, and, uh, we'll probably, how long you think we'll be in here?
About 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
To confirm with counsel.
Okay, we'll come back out of closed session at, uh, 9:25.
Mr. Chair, Lee Burdick, County Council, appearing this time on behalf of the assessor. Uh, I guess the question is, are you prepared to take argument on the requests? Uh, because this matter has not been set in for closed session today, so if the board is going to render a decision on the clarification, now would be the time uh, for it to take argument and consider deliberation.
Okay.
Ms. Burdick, no, the, uh, request to go into closed session is simply to confirm with counsel to go over the board's options for how to handle the hearing.
Very good. I appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will adjourn and go to closed session and report back out in less than 15 minutes, so.
Before you go, Melanie, this is Mike Slattery. Do you want me in the closed session? And if so, is there a separate link?
Mike, it's going to be a purely procedural discussion. Um, I will call you on my cellphone.
Uh, yeah, is this Carrie or is it Lee?
Turn your mic on.
Okay, Carrie, I'll wait for your call. Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me.
What about a link for me?
Yeah, Richard, give us, Richard, can you hold on just for one minute? We'll work this out. I'm sorry, I had no idea that this was happening this morning, so give me just a moment.
If it's easier, just call me.
We will probably do that, Supervisor. If there's something else I need you to do, I'll call you in any case, okay?
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Hi. Hello? Hello? No, nothing reception. Hello?
This is Wade Norwood. Was someone calling from here?
Hi, Norwood. Um, right now, somebody should be getting ahold of you.
Someone is trying to get ahold of me?
Uh, no, sorry. So they're in closed session for just a little bit, um, so the meeting will resume in just a few.
Okay, thank you. I'll stay on the phone.
Hi, Carrie. This is Mike. I saw that you tried to call me from my cellphone. It's, it, there was no connection because the cell power isn't working very well from here. We're not working so. This is my landline, uh, 951-659-4083. If you want to patch me into the closed session, find me in this number, okay? Yeah.
Mike, this is Wade Norwood. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Well, hold on. I think somebody's trying to call me. Hold on.
Mike, please make sure you mute yourself.
Hey, wait, just a second.
Mike?
Hey, Carrie, how you doing?
Mike, can you, uh, still hear me?
Just one second. Let me tell Wade I'm on speakerphone.
Hey, Wade, I'm talking with Carrie. Uh, I'll get back to you in a second.
Okay. Yeah, there. Wait, was, you need to take my video? Okay. Okay, you want me to hang up this phone conversation?
You, Mike?
Okay, then I'll mute. Yeah, hold on.
Mike?
Hey, Wade, I got it. I'm talking with Carrie.
Yeah, just a quick issue, um.
No, Wade, uh, they got me on the other line. Sorry. You know, I don't want to put you off, but I got to answer the other phone. Hold on.
Okay.
Do I wait till 9:10, 25, or just do it and start?
You can start now.
Okay. Okay, we are back. Uh, we are reconvening from the closed session, and we are now in open session. The meeting of the Kings County Board of Equalization is called to order. The members have conferred with counsel, uh, on a matter before us, and are ready to proceed. Now, we're going to start with arguments by the parties. The board will now hear arguments from parties in support of their position. Each argument will be limited to 15 minutes each total. Uh, this includes the party's opening argument, any rebuttal arguments, and, and, arguments a party wants to provide after opposition party speaks, and closing statement. Whatever. Um, as a moving party, the assessor may present her argument first. So we're going to start with the assessor first, and, uh, so, Kristy Lee, are you available?
Chairman Verboon, before we begin, may I make a clarification for the rest of the record?
Yeah.
Were we going to be parcelling those, the time limit up into, uh?
15 minutes, 15 minutes each. Uh, it includes the opening arguments, the rebuttal arguments, and, uh,
Closing.
The closing.
Were you going to allow the parties to parcel the time out themselves, or did you want them to limit themselves to five minutes each on each category?
Five minutes each on each category.
Thank you, sir.
And, um, thank you for that clarification, so. I, you have briefings, but I have to give you a second, and, um, I want to affirm the position taken in that briefing. I want to highlight just a little bit of the argument. One, the, um, for you know, the argument, um, is not supported by law. 916 does not best, or effective best, include the, with the Superior Court. But, like I said, this is not supported by law. Um, this is not appealed for purposes of, you know, there is no law presented in this court, which is contingent. It could be applied by analogy, the proceeding originated from a frozen period. To the contrary, by its own terms, code civil procedure 916 limits itself to ordinary proceedings in the court objective. Therefore, the automatic state provision of the, not allowed. Next, I'll move to address the, um, arguments that the board's request for clarification are impacting. Um, Laprino opened with two theories. One, that there is a statutory, statute of limitations precluding, um, the assessor's request. However, there is no statute of limitations for the court request. Property tax rule 326 only bars reconsidering or reconsideration. The assessor is only asking for clarification, which is expressly allowed by Rule 325 without reference to any type of limitation. The next, um, the next theory posed on property tax requests in the last theory, it again is inapplicable to the present situation because the assessor's request was not pursuant to the claim against which Laprino must defend. And because the assessor's request brings no unfair prejudice. The burden to show unfair prejudice to the extent that statutes may apply, the burden to show unfair prejudice would be on the party asserting it, therefore, it would be on Laprino. Laprino does not argue how it will be prejudiced by the assessor's request, and merely speculates that the Board of Equalization itself will be prejudiced if it cannot remember the rationalities to support the conclusion. Finally, I will address the issue of whether this is rehearing or reconsideration. As indicated, property tax rule 6 bars any rehearing or reconsideration after the time of. Um, the assessor makes no request for the Board of Equalization to hear or reconsider. The assessor does not request taking new evidence or reconsidering the evidence already presented. The assessor only seeks clarification of the Board of Equalization's existing final determination, including the basic first determination, the method it used to value a property and the economic life of a personal property investor. For this reason, this is not a request for reconsideration only through the certification of the final determination already made, and it is permitted. Um, I will open it up on tap to, if you have any questions, or whatever.
Any questions? Mr. Valley, got any questions?
Chairman, thank you.
Supervisor Valley, do you have any questions?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Nope. Supervisor Valley online, so, uh, proceed, please.
I'm sorry, this is Wade Norwood. Are you saying it's my turn?
Well, are you done with yours?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah, okay, good. Yeah, go ahead, Wade. Sorry about that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to pick it all up.
So now, now, we're gonna, I'll go ahead and do it officially, so, uh, now, uh, uh, assessor's portion is done, and we'll go ahead and proceed to the Laprino presentation of his arguments. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Norwood. All your person.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Uh, and I'm here primarily to answer any of the board's questions, however, I did want to point out a couple of things. Um, I've been doing this a very long time, uh, about 22 years as a property tax attorney. Um, what the assessor is asking for here, I have never seen. Um, people do decisions of decisions, but usually, it's within a week or two or three of the decision being issued. And the reason for that is, uh, if you wait a long time, um, it gets harder and harder to remember exactly what happened, what the evidence was presented exactly, what happened at the hearing, um, it gets It gets further and further removed, it's more and more difficult to go back and revisit it. But I've never seen an assessor ask for clarification after an appeal has been filed. Because courts have exclusive jurisdiction once they take a case. And the reason for that is, when the board issues a decision, it's a final decision and open to appeal. So, with the assessor's argument, what they're really saying is, there's no limit to them requesting a clarification, no time limit. So, they, they're asking for the clarification after an appeal has already been filed. And what that would lead to is sort of a, some sort of claim of concurrent jurisdiction between the board and the court, which is not the case. The courts have exclusive jurisdiction once an appeal is filed. And in our brief, we cited a number of cases that specifically say that the purpose of this, once jurisdiction is switched to the court, trial, you know, judgments and decisions can't be modified because they're being considered by the appellate body, whatever that appellate body is. They're looking at the decision the board made back in last December. And so, in order to do that, the decision can't be modified, changed, or expanded in the midst of an appeal. It just doesn't make any sense. It would make it impossible for courts to, in an orderly fashion, review the board's decisions. So, I think the problem, one of the fundamental problems with what the assessor is arguing is that it would, it would create sort of this mess where the board could modify, or explain, or change its written statement of decision at any point in time. I suppose even after a trial in Superior Court, under the assessor's argument, you could modify your decision, and then it would render even the trial a moot point in Superior Court, and they'd have to redo it. In this case, if the board were to modify its decision or expand it, it would change the nature of the appeal itself. We'd have to rebrief the court, we'd have to modify our complaint. We've already gone to the trouble and time and expense of filing a complaint in Superior Court. And what the assessor is doing is sort of, um, coming in after the fact and trying to modify or expand the board's decision. I guess that's the other thing that's unusual here is that the assessor doesn't really cite anything that's ambiguous in the board's decision. There's no wording in the board's decision that's ambiguous. They're just asking you to expand it and modify it in that way, and property tax rule 326 just doesn't allow that. So, I think there's, um, the last thing the assessor argued was, we haven't shown any prejudice, but in fact, I think we have any prejudice because what we're talking about is we've gone through the trouble of an appeal, and now they want to change the board's decision or have the board change its decision, and that would adversely affect the appeal we've already filed. So, I think we've got a number of problems, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Any questions from the board? None? Supervisor Valley, any questions?
Uh, no, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Norwood. At this time, would the assessor like to rebuttal on that?
Yes, I will, thank you, Chair. La Prino argues, as it did in his brief, that the control court has exclusive jurisdiction over the administrative stage. But they still haven't cited any authority, and they would like it to apply, um, section 916 by analogy, but there is no authority for many applications of that section by analogy. To the contrary, what you have is you have case law specifically indicating that it doesn't apply beyond its own term. While this is not a special proceeding for purposes of the going civil procedure, it is a proceeding, and, and the law that I cited in my brief is applicable to show that the terms of TCP 916 are limited to appeals as that is defined, and the courts have not extended it beyond that. La Prino has not offered any case law or evidence to show that this code section can apply by analogy to cases outside of that definition of appeal. The other point that I'd like to make is that the assessor has cited areas where there is ambiguity. The assessor hasn't just found a blanket request for clarification without requesting certain areas to clarify. The assessor is very clear in its request about the points that it sought clarification on. I think that is well defined for this board. I have the word.
Right, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Norwood, you like to rebuttal that? And you have, you only use four minutes of your time, so you have about four minutes left.
Thank you very much. You know, there is, uh, the assessor's correct that section 916 by its terms specifically applies to trial courts and appeals from trial court decisions, but the, the concept is essentially the same. In other words, if, if you didn't have a final decision by the board, and it could be changed, and after it's appealed, then it ruins the entire appeal process, and it would mean that the board was retaining some sort of concurrent jurisdiction with the, with the trial court that's hearing the appeal. And the, um, one of the, you know, in page three of our opposition, we cite several cases where you're not supposed to modify the decision in any respect because the board is looking at. The 916 is very clear in what it says, and I think property tax rule 326 is also clear because property tax rule 326 says, "The board shall not reconsider or rehear an application or modify a decision unless it is a, to, the decision reflects a ministerial clerical error, or the decision was just a result of..." Those don't apply here. There's no, um, there's no way a modification of the decision can be made, and that is really what the assessor is asking. Can you explain this to, we didn't know what you meant by this. What they're asking for instead is for a complete expansion of the board's decision, which would interfere with the trial court's, with the appellate court's review of the, of the board's decision. And I did want to point out that, uh, this is just sort of a, look at the section 916 in the assessor's arguments, the cases cited that, say, 916 doesn't apply and so on, are, they long preceded section 916. It just, uh, the assessor also argued that this was some sort of special proceeding. It's not a special proceeding. Those are statutory defined, and we provided examples of that in, from, which is a legal authority often used by the courts. But the other thing is, and I guess this would be sort of my last point, is that, uh, the board has heard the case, they made a decision last December. The assessor has provided no explanation why the assessor waited 10 months to ask for clarification. That is too long a time. It far, the State Board of Equilization's request should be made promptly to clarify a decision. That's long gone. 10 months later, and it's already been appealed, this is improper to ask the board to now go back and, uh, amend a decision. And with that, again, I'll just, uh, I'll rest on that.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Assessor's office?
Yes, I would like to address a couple of those points. First, um, La Prino argues that, since he's argued that the assessor is asking you to modify a decision, that's not the case. The assessor is not asking you to modify anything at all. Go back to my brief on page two. The decision is defined. I mean, a determined decision this time, as in judicial or agency determination, after consideration of the laws. This is that ultimate determination that cannot be modified, so your board, La Prino is not asking you to modify that. All that La Prino is asking for is clarification about specific points in the decision. It's not asking you to modify the decision as the decision is defined by the legal dictionary.
Okay, but at this point, we're just going to do closing arguments, because you already used up most of your time.
So, in closing, I argue with an asking board to grant this assessor's request for the reasons just stated. I am also asking you to grant this assessor's request because, um, because the assessor appropriately requested clarification. There is no law, no statute, nothing that would permit a request for any of these activities with, and, or, with limits the board's abilities to provide that clarification and, and on that basis, I am asking for...
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Norwood, closing arguments?
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, this is really requesting a modification of the decision. It's expanding the decision. It's explaining areas that the assessor is asking you to write up, which were not part of the original decision. And what would that look like if the boards were to modify decisions or to change their statement of decision this long after a hearing? Would require you to review all the evidence, review the transcripts, review its prior notes, go back and reconsider the case, and that's expressly bylaw prohibited under property tax rule 326. You're not supposed to reconsider or rehear a case. You're not supposed to modify decision unless it's clerical error, and this is that law. And it's important to interfere with the court's jurisdiction, because what would the court in this situation do? Then, the court proceedings have already started, the complaint was filed, there's been an answer to the complaint, the court is now considering the case. It is going to take briefing, of course, but if the board were to modify its decision, then the court would have to be informed the board's going to modify its decision, change its statement, a new complaint would probably have to be filed, delays in the court system, and additional briefing on this issue. It would require new analysis of the board's decision, and that is all the detriment of the taxpayer who has already filed an appeal based on what the board did after careful consideration. So, based on that, as I said, I've never seen this in my 22 years of doing this, never has any assessor asked for a court, a board to clarify its decision after it was already under appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood, appreciate that. Thank you both for your time and allowing us to get this done in less than 15 minutes each. You guys did great. Right now, we're going to adjourn to closed session. This concludes the evidential, evidentiary hearing. The board will now convene in closed session for deliberation. We will reconvene in open session, I would say 15, 20 minutes, let's say 11:05. And we hereby adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Thank you.
Yesterday.
Is that Saturday?
Okay, we are back recording and we are reconvening in open session. The, this meeting of the Kings County Board of Equalation is called to order. Um, the members have deliberated on this matter before us and we are ready to vote. Do we have a motion? Uh, we have a motion and we have a second. Motion by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Neves. Madam Court, please call a roll. Do we need to explain what we just had a motion on?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Will you want to do that, Carrie?
Uh, yes, sir. Was your motion to deny the assessor's request for clarification?
Okay, the request for denial of the, uh, denial for request. Anyway, we're getting through COVID. And we have a motion and a second. Madam Court, please call a roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Four in favor, one abstention. Uh, thank you very much. And at this time, the meeting will stand adjourned. But before, well, we, no, no, no. The, uh, at this time, we will go back to closed session on a different item. Uh, so we're going to go to closed session. Litigation initially formulated. The title is the matter of assessment appeal of Charles and Jamie Kuhn, revocable living trust from the application for change of assessment, government code section 54956.9D1. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Do we see any reporting out? This meeting is going to be in closed session. Adjourning to closed session. Yeah.
And, uh, no, no.
And no reporting out. So we are, uh, adjourning to closed session and thank you very much.
Hey, hey, Mr. Chair. Uh, for this closed session, are, can we stay live on this link? Or the rest of the party is going to, uh, get off of this one?
I believe so.
Supervisor, Supervisor Valley, it's, it's up to you how you want to do that. The, the only problem with staying on WebEx is it's not as secure.
I can care so much better when we're on this than.
Okay, we will, we will kick everybody else out and lock the meeting down.
All right, thank you.